My mother, would I see myself in you? If I sent for my baby, man, and she don't come. If I sent for my baby, man, and she don't come. Well, doctors in the hot springs sure couldn't help her none. She gets unruly, says she don't want to. She gets unruly, says she don't want to. I take my thirty-two twenty and I cut her half in two. She got a thirty-eight special, but I believe it's much too light. She got thirty-eight special, I believe it's much too light. I got a thirty-two twenty, gotta make the cats all right. Ah, baby, where you stay last night? Ah, baby, where you stay last night? Didn't come home till the sun was shining bright. I'm gonna shoot my pistol, gonna shoot my Gatling gun. Gonna shoot my pistol, gonna shoot my Gatling gun. You made me love you, now your man has come. I got a thirty-eight special boy, hit you very well. I got a thirty-eight special boy, hit you very well. Well, I got a thirty-two twenty now, it's burning. Ah, baby, where you stay last night? Ah, baby, where you stay last night? Your hair's all tangled and your clothes don't fit you right. Well, baby, I just can't get my rest. Ah, baby, can't get no rest. With this thirty-two twenty laying up and down my first. Mr. Bones and my man, Mr. Willie, cruising on our way. Rambling round in the Zamboni till we reach San Francisco Bay. Tuesday, after rush hour from the Motor City hit the trail. South Paradise and Dean Moriarty searching for the Holy Grail. Willie says to me, "Let's fly." Mr. Bones, moon's up, adventure comes. Gas up, crank the tunes. Time's wasting, the moment is now. Rapping on for hours about nothing, singing songs without a tune. Camping out underneath the stars, staying with friends of Canafu. Zigzagging the highways and the byways, wherever we found a friend. Hanging round till we heard coyote crying, back on the road again. Willie says to me, "Let's fly." Mr. Bones, moon's up, adventure comes. Gas up, crank the tunes.
All right, I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Mal.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
All right, on our agenda this evening, we postponed the first reading ordinance approving a police mutual aid agreement with the city of Laurel. So that will be postponed for another time. Nothing else changes on our agenda tonight. For next week, March fifteenth, the council will meet at six o'clock in administrative function session to enable the city manager to provide a briefing on a personnel matter. Administrative function sessions are closed to the public and the regular public meeting will begin at seven-thirty. We will have a voting session next week with three items. The first is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for an HVAC controls for the community center and the auditorium. Yay! Resolution providing for appointments to the Board of Elections, a resolution providing for appointments to the Safe Roadways Committee. Our work session next week is a discussion of stormwater requirements, proposed projects, and stormwater fee. That will then take us to Wednesday, March twenty-second. We'll have a closed session that day as well and have a meeting on public safety with the council. And then we'll start our public meeting at seven-thirty with a presentation and update from the Village of Tacoma Park and an update from the Safe Roadways Committee presenting their annual report and traffic calming recommendations. We have a voting session that night with a tentative resolution regarding the subdivision application on Ethan Allen and Jackson property, which we will be discussing tonight. And then we have appointments and reappointments to a number of city committees and a work session tentatively scheduled, an update on library renovation. That then will take us into April, on Wednesday, April fifth, at our city council meeting. Our public hearing will be that night on a charter amendment regarding the election date change, so a public hearing on April fifth regarding the charter amendment to change the election date. And then we will have a presentation of the city manager's budget for FY 2018 on April fifth. The next evening, on Thursday, April sixth, we will have an open house on the budget from seven to nine PM in the Azalea Room. This is something new that we are trying this year, so the fifth will be a formal presentation that you can come and watch here, watch live on City TV, or the video will be up afterwards. And come on Thursday, April sixth, to ask any questions or to dig deeper into the budget that night. And that takes us into early April, all right? Now we will take public comments on voting items. And our only voting item tonight is a consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of resolutions regarding state legislation that we have been discussing over the last couple of weeks and a resolution providing for appointments to the Noise Control Board. Any public comments on the consent agenda this evening? No? Then we'll move on to general public comments. If you have public comments on anything else this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes. Yes, that one, sorry, yeah, that one, sorry.
Do I just start?
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Christopher Lamb. I live on Ethan Allen Avenue. My house is the one next to that vacant lot on the corner of Ethan Allen and Jackson, which you're going to discuss sooner or later, about the subdivision proposal. I want to start by saying I am in favor of developing the lot. I do not like having that vacant lot next to me. A lot of people park there, weird things go on. I prefer if there were, you know, at least one home there. But reluctantly, I'm not in favor of the proposal that they have. And I'll tell you why. The main reason is the distance to Ethan Allen. If you look at their proposed plan, their house, they're dividing that lot into two, they have two houses, and the one on the corner is much closer to Ethan Allen than my houses. My house is about fifty feet back, so is the one next to it, the next one down, the next one down, and so on and so forth. But their house is quite a bit closer to it, so close that, judging by the plan that they gave me, if I go out my front door and turn right, I will be looking at the middle of the back of their house. So the whole left side of their house will be between me and the street there. And I do not like that idea. I think aesthetically, obviously, it's pretty bad. I think it'll have a pretty severe impact on my property values and the property values of all the other houses in the neighborhood. And so, you know, I got to be opposed to that. And not only that, but I took a look at the county code, and I'm no expert, but I took a look at the county code and it appears to me that they do not meet it. Now, I think they're acting in good faith. They have an opinion from the county, from a specialist, who says they don't need to meet what's called the established building line, which is how far back all the other houses on the street are. But if you read that exchange in detail, and it's on their website, if you go through that email exchange in detail, you'll see that the county specialist did not understand what they were asking. He thought they were building a single house that faced Ethan Allen. And because the distance, you have to be so far back if you're facing the street, it's so far back, it doesn't matter what the building line is. But they're facing Jackson instead of Ethan Allen, and the side setback is not so far. And they took his comment to say that there's no building line to mean they don't have a building line on the side setback, and they put their building much closer to Ethan Allen. I don't think that complies with the statute. And so, you know, maybe they won't approve it in the end, I don't know, or maybe that part's over. But it's going to get tied up in legal issues, there's going to be all sorts of problems with it. I think the council ought to get ahead of this and come out against this plan now. Let them come back with a better plan that actually fits the neighborhood and that meets the county standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Roger Allen. I live across the street from that vacant lot at 401 Ethan Allen. Basically, I certainly agree with everything my neighbor said. Leaving alone the technical issues, I think he's all correct on that, what it seems to me is that the current lot is zoned, the law says you can put one house there. The developer is saying, "Please change the rules for me so I can lay some money and then leave, and then leave the neighbors with the resulting problems produced by his being allowed to break the rules." In addition to the problems with the setback, which are certainly significant, the two houses will be very close together. The turn from Ethan Allen Avenue onto Jackson Avenue is a pretty tight turn, and it's downhill with limited visibility. There've been a few surprises of people not expecting to have people there. This would put two driveways there, presumably two sets of cars blocking that road, so that oncoming traffic is going to encounter some, there will be an accident sooner or later caused by this, and if you can predict the accident, it's no accident. The other issue is that building two houses there means twice the disruption. Either they will take twice as long to build a house, or they'll do it twice as industriously and make twice as much noise. My neighbors and myself have been across from that lot for years and years and years and years and years, where there've been endless illegal construction, marshalling yards, and all sorts of disruption and all sorts of noise going on at six in the morning with backup alarms and so on and so on and so on. We've really had enough with being understanding about everyone else needing to break the rules because it would be inconvenient for them. I would also like to add that three of my neighbors who weren't able to attend tonight, the woman who lives at the other side of the vacant lot on the other side of the corner on Jackson, wanted me to say that she agrees basically with what Chris said. She wants a house there, but this would really be too much. Another neighbor who lives next door to us, the points he wanted to make is that that's enough of a variance that he wasn't sure you would be bending or stretching the rules, but basically breaking them. And one other neighbor who basically, I sent an email around, she agreed with the points I've just made. One house maybe, two houses is just too much and not fair to the neighborhood, and I don't see why people should get to break the rules just to make money. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Are we on voting items or non-voting items?
We're general, we've moved beyond voting items. So go ahead, Kathy.
Well, then, on the same topic of the lot at Jackson and Ethan Allen Avenue, I do have concerns about the proposal that's there because it seems like it's too much. I understand that it may be within the zoning of what Montgomery County allows, but quite frankly, it's outside of the character of the neighborhood. And we have seen this kind of thing happen before, and it's kind of a disaster both for the developer and for the neighborhood because they'll build a huge house, it takes up most of the lot, they use cheap construction because they feel like they're going to get more money for a huge house. They don't get more money, they get less money, so that a lot of the developers, some of the developers have even lost money on the deal. We have some monstrosities going up. It's really damaging to the environment, and it's just completely out of character with the neighborhood. So we get people moving in who aren't really tied to the neighborhood, who are kind of like big house kind of people, not caring about the environment, destroying the impervious surface, and not really engaged. And so I think it's really a problem. Personally, I think it would be nice to see one house on that lot. It would take it out of the realm of looking like an industrial parking lot, but I think it would be better to have one house that is more, a smaller size, that doesn't take up so much impervious surface, and that is more in character with the neighborhood. Overall, in terms of the other problem properties that I've seen happening around Tacoma Park, I would like to see the city look to Montgomery County, to the Planning Commission, to see if we can, I know we have overlay zone authority in certain areas, but if there could be some kind of a residential kind of overlay for these developers that are coming in with very out-of-character kinds of buildings that are very disruptive and damaging to the environment and the community. So, thank you. And I've, less than a minute, a minute to go.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, then we'll move on to council comments. Any comments from the council tonight? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I've grown concerned because as I've looked around the neighborhood recently, I've seen a lot of people walking around and slapping their foreheads with their palm or their hand. And although this may be beneficial to someone who has a job as a brain surgeon, I'm concerned about it for my neighbors, my friends and my family. I would just like to encourage the new immigrants in my neighborhood and the young African-American people in my neighborhood to do a little reading and read up on the Bacon Rebellion and how that impacted the plantation owners in early America and how they moved from using indentured servants to work their plantations. Many of them were moved to slavery. And I think it's important for the young people in our neighborhood to understand the difference between immigrants and slaves. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I'm sad to say that, just following up on that comment that the new Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, I used to work at HUD before I came here, recently made a speech where he seemed to equate immigrants and slaves, which was a disgraceful set of comments. I wasn't planning to mention that, but glad I'm not working there anymore right now. A few other things. Last week, there was discussion about the letter of interest, I believe is what it is, for the New Hampshire Avenue redevelopment, and I think there was a discussion about the fact that that would be going out today, and it obviously hasn't gone out today, and I think it's still in the works. I just, maybe we could get a clarification on that since I had asked about it then?
Sure, we were hoping to get it out today and now hope to have it ready for a council's review by Friday so it can go out next week.
Great, thanks. And two other things I mentioned previously, but the time is getting closer now. We're going to be jointly with Montgomery College, hosting a series of public discussions about the future of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring campus, including the construction activity that may take place in North Tacoma. And the first of those is March 21st, and it's right here, starting at seven-thirty PM, so anyone who's interested in that should plan on attending. One other thing I wanted to mention, we've talked a fair amount in recent months about expansion of the library, and we had approved continuing to move down that path, still more work to be done on it. There is a pending bond bill that would help us get some additional funds for that project if it were to be adopted. I'm going to be in Annapolis on Monday testifying in favor of that, I believe, with staff from the library as well, so I just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Unity in the Community, Washington Ventus University, and Hank Prensky for hosting Sicko on Monday. It's a very important documentary, especially with the recent repeal bill that's coming out of the House GOP. Those of you that haven't seen the movie, it talked about how so many people in America die because they don't have health care. And it's fascinating that in eight years, we have come so far, but now all of that will disappear if this proposed legislation from Congress goes forward. So I would suggest writing your members of Congress, telling them that you would like the ACA to stay as it is, and if anything, they need to bring more people on to health care. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend Montgomery County's MML Chapter Luncheon in Annapolis. It was attended by many members of the General Assembly, but one disappointing fact that there was only one member from District 20. But it was a great chance to tell the members about the priorities that MML as a whole and the local chapter have for this session. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Koreshi.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the mayor and Meghan Murphy and the rest of the folks at Capital City Cheesecake and many of the Ward Three and non-Ward Three residents who came to the community coffee on Friday. It was a very honest and open discussion, as it always is, for the city staff's benefit and my colleagues' benefit. Some of the issues that we discussed at length not only included the future of a potential aquatic center at Washington Ventus, but also the site of the hospital, but also tax duplication continues to come up as a concern, and folks have real interest in that. And then also for Ward Three, and Councilmember Kovar happened to just be passing through to get him up in, but I think he just couldn't stay away. But he was very helpful, was a real concern about coordinating efforts with the District of Columbia and the council member on our side, Brandon Todd, in addressing the real safety and road condition concerns of Eastern Avenue, which is its own gateway into our community. So I raised that all to say that I hope that, and I know the city staff is well aware of this, but as these things come back up on the radar, that if there are efforts that the council can make to add pressure or strategies that we can employ to use our political capital, if we have any, with other jurisdictions like DC, to address this real safety issue, then I'm all ears and I'm willing to work hard on that. One other thing that I just wanted to bring up for my colleagues, which we've talked about a few times in passing, but it's occurred to me more and more as I think about, as a parent with childcare, as everybody knows, the governor pretty much unilaterally has extended the school year by two or two and a half weeks, which has real implications on Maryland residents and their ability to care for their children and budgeting and preparing for how you care for your children and the impact on the bottom dollar. If there are like-minded members of this body who would like to express some dismay over it being such a unilateral move in the efforts to, I guess, address tourism and economic revitalization in places like Ocean City, I would be all ears because I have increasingly been talking to residents in Ward Three who have expressed real displeasure with this unilateral move without, from their perspective, any due process or understanding of how it impacts the daily lives of individuals and families. So I might be floating some ideas around to the city staff and my colleagues on potentially just expressing our displeasure if we are in some kind of majority on that issue, but I'd ask for my colleagues to also provide some ideas in that regard. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. I also attended the Maryland Municipal League Luncheon yesterday with Councilmember Smith, and I had some interesting conversations. I want to kind of paint a picture of what this luncheon amounts to because MML, this is the Montgomery Chapter of Maryland Municipal League, which is comprised of all the municipalities in Montgomery County. And once a year, we hold this luncheon, in this case, it was the Senate Office Building. The MML gets the money to lay out a very long table of a whole lot of food. And we sit back and we wait. And then pretty soon, of course, word spreads throughout the building like a contagion, and people are starting to come in when the session breaks for lunch, the Senate breaks for lunch, and the next thing you know, we're getting senators galore, and then their staffs, and goodness knows whom else, coming in for the free food. And the hope is, is that while a lot of people are just there, literally, sincerely, just for the food, come in and go out and say, "Thank you very much," and they're gone. A number do hang around, and we do get a chance to kind of buttonhole them for two, three, four, five, 10 minutes, and talk about something that's useful to us and for them. So it's worth it. And in that context, I had a chance to talk with Senator Young from Frederick County about the bill that I testified on a couple of weeks ago, the bill that would have made it illegal for any city in the state to be a sanctuary city. And I testified on behalf of the city in opposition. So he said that no vote had been yet been taken on it, and his estimate, there probably wouldn't even be a vote taken on it in committee. So it'll never leave committee. None of this surprises me because it was pretty apparent when I was at the witness stand talking that most of the people, most of the senators in the room, being Democrat, were in opposition to the idea, but I just thought I'd mention that. I also had an opportunity to meet with the consumer advocate for the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission, who was, there was two of them there, to take, they were cosponsors of this luncheon for us, to sit down and talk to one of these guys, the guy that covers southern Montgomery County. I told him, "I didn't even know that UGIs existed or that WSSC had consumer advocates." And he says, "Oh, we've had this for eight years. I think they've kept their candle under a basket." So I was asking him about the stuff that was going on in my neighborhood, and the guy was very open and candid about the realities of stuff, and I don't have his name, but I'll share that with people, I left the business card at home, but it does sound like, one of the key things that I learned... like, what, one of the key things that I learned is that they themselves are very anxious to coordinate their work with the other utility companies, with Pepco, Washington Gas, and that's what they're trying to do in our case, in New Hampshire Gardens. And they understand that this is an issue, and they want, it's in their own self-interest, their selfish interest as a utility, that the work be done in coordination, so that they go to the expense of paving everything, and then the next utility or SHA comes along and tears it all up again. So that was helpful. The finally, I want to mention a recent incident that happened two nights ago on Hammond Avenue, which is up behind the, what's the current market? It used to be Safeway?
Megamart.
Megamart, thank you. At about 4:30 in the morning, a resident up there was aroused from sleep with her family, when a lot of people with police written on the back of their jackets started knocking on the doors, and then pounding on the doors, and then knocking on windows, and shouting, and saying, "We know you're in there." And so I was alerted to this by a third party, and made an inquiry with the police department. And my point is, is that it turned out not to be ICE, even though that's the nature, that's given the current context we're living in, we're all sort of on edge and assuming that anything that seems a little weird must mean that ICE is on the march. Turned out, it was the state police who had not notified the city police of their intent, but they were there to effectuate an arrest warrant for a wanted criminal who they believe lived in one of these houses on Hammond Avenue. There was a whole bunch of these police residents on the street, were scared and confused. But it just, the point is, is that we need to be very careful about what we observe, and to make sure we call the city police department right away to find out what the city police know. As a sanctuary city, we have that assurance that we can give to residents, that when you talk to our police department about whatever is the going on, you're going to be safe if you're undocumented, or even if you're partially documented or green card. A lot of people are still very anxious about concerns about being detained, but it's okay. You need to know that you can call the police department. And in this case, I'm not sure it would have helped right away, because it took our own police department, who happened to stumble upon it, the, by chance, to find out themselves that this was, in fact, the state police. So I'm perfectly satisfied that we know exactly what happened and why and all that. But I just thought I would mention that to anybody who's here tonight, and anybody who's listening in.
Thank you. Councilmember May?
Thank you. I thought I would do a new business roundup, because I've seen a lot of exciting things in the last little while. Everything from a Ward III resident who announced her partnership in the Tacoma Beverage Company, opening soon on Laurel and Old Town, that if you peer in the windows of the vacant spot next to the gelato place, there are chairs and a dining establishment, restaurant going in, and a bar in the back, I think, of that location. There's a for-lease sign up for the first time in a vacant spot in the junction, and I understand some progress in an actual leasing decision. The Allstate office in what used to be the Big Bad Wolf location at the edge of Tacoma Park, next to Busboys and Poets, and at the other side of Ward II, on New Hampshire Avenue, a new barber shop in that little area of stores at the corner of Ethan Allen and New Hampshire Avenue. So it's great to see that. It's great to see the demand, and I know a lot more is coming as well. And just wanted to remark on that, because we've made a lot of progress in terms of demand for commercial establishments and meeting residents' needs for new services.
Great. I have a couple of updates. First, Happy International Women's Day, everyone?
You're at work?
I mean, I'm at work, I know. I'm wearing my red, though. And Councilmember Siemens has his red. So I just actually came from an event that our new state delegate, Janelle Wilkins, was holding at the Civic Center in Silver Spring. It was a room filled with women and men, talking about women's issues and what we can do to strengthen our community. And it was great that she was able to hold that, even though she's in the middle of session in Annapolis. The other thing that's happening, just to update folks, that we began on Saturday, a cohort group of us of 20 people, the SEED workshops, this is part of the Union Community Initiative. SEED stands for Seeking Education Equity and Diversity. This is the group of us for, we're going to meet twice a month for four months to talk about our experiences, reflect on other people's experiences, to examine systems of oppression, poverty, privilege, and power, and challenge us to push for change in our community. So we began with three hours on Saturday morning, and it was, I'm looking forward to the rest of the sessions. And hopefully, if it goes well, the wonderful women who are running this for us, who are volunteering to run this, are calling this the Tacoma Park SEED One. So I think that's good, that they're already thinking about doing it in the future. We did have a great community coffee on Friday, and I want to announce that the next community coffee will be April 7th, and it will be a combined Ward IV and Ward V community coffee at Natra's Tea House on Erie. So just mark your calendars for that. And then, just to update folks, I know we've talked a couple of times about a potential youth council for Tacoma Park, and Mr. Garing, who is the faculty, the teacher who oversees the difference makers at the Tacoma Park Middle School, is excited, has been talking to the difference makers, and is making some progress there. So I saw him this week, and he said that he's hoping to get things moving on that end, and come back to us as a council, and propose what a youth council might look like. So, and then, Councilmember Kreshi, I would love to talk to you more about ideas. I have some on the summer program issue. So, and I think that's it for me tonight. I'll turn it over to the city manager. I'll remember this week to turn it over to you.
[laughing]
Yeah. Oh, yes, I have to turn you on, though. Go ahead.
No, I am. It's annoying. Just actually, a couple, a couple items. An update on the transition of the Pepco streetlights to alley D. Councilmember Smith inquired about this last week, and this is a frustrating process. This is one where Pepco certainly wants us to proceed on it, but it took us a long time to actually get the geo-located streetlight information that's critical for knowing where the lights are.
They have provided this?
They have done that now. That's a big victory. We do have an intern who will be working on verifying the information for that, and we're getting another intern to work on that. The, we will need to have some conversations with SHA regarding the lighting requirements along state highways as part of this. We're still asking Pepco about the financing program that they had shared with us, but the details are yet to come. We have provided the list of the required attributes of the new lights, and Pepco is going out to bid for the purchase of the fixtures. So we're moving on it, but it's, it takes continued effort from our staff.
Can I ask, did we do an assessment first of all the lights in the city?
No, actually, that's what we got the geocoded information on. We have a lot of information, but we're not sure it's correct. And so part of this is to make sure it's correct, and as we go through, there are areas where we know it's dark, or we know that maybe the lights are too, in the wrong place. So part of this is just kind of getting the basic information, what's on the polls, that kind of thing, making sure it's correct on those spreadsheets, so that we can move forward.
And will, oh, will we have a dashboard to be able to control the lights, like Pepco promised for Flower Avenue? Will this be for the entire, will we have this dashboard for the entire city?
It's supposed to be like that, yes. Yeah. And I think it's going to evolve over time to be something that's easier for us to control.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
A couple common questions. How visible will this be, this process? In other words, what will residents observe while this stage is progressing? I mean, I assume there'll be people out, an intern or so?
You know, it's probably going to be really low-key at first, but there's going to be times when we're focused on a neighborhood, where we'll be meeting with the neighborhood folks, because they have a good sense about, "Oh gee, this light shines in my window," or "This is, you know, this is an area that concerns me on this street," that kind of thing. So we'll have a lot of conversations.
Yeah, that anticipates my second question, which was to say, when we know about dark spots, or over, or inappropriately lit, that will be part of this process, and that'll be great.
Right. So we're still at the early stage even to determine kind of which neighborhoods kind of are ready, you know, probably the next ones that we need to work on, that kind of thing. The next item I wanted to share, we have a meeting in the azalea room in this building on Thursday, March 16th, at 7:00 PM, an informational meeting on the New Avenue bikeways project. And this is a project that was made possible by a technical assistance grant from COG for the purpose of developing a creative redesign of the underutilized service lanes on the southbound side of New Hampshire Avenue, to allow a two-directional bikeway, as well as maintain access to people's property. And so I guess there's a, we're at a 30% preliminary design. I've not seen it. It'll be very interesting to see what that informational meeting has, and it does build on some of the new AV information that we'll be discussing later this evening.
And will this be protected?
Have yet to see.
Okay.
I don't think it'll be completely protected, because you have to have access to the people's properties.
It's hardly protected, because there's a barrier between--
It's certainly more, it's certainly protected from New Hampshire Avenue major traffic.
Okay.
That's the kind of protection I like, speaking to the bike discussions we've had previously. For the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Update, just, we're still in the process of having the various meetings. We do have the online survey from the first set of meetings available now in English, Spanish, and Amharic on the website. We have already received 507 people looking at those online webs, online surveys. 317 people have submitted their feedback on them. 208 of those completed the entire survey, and 109 provided partial responses. So that's wonderful response rate. We still want to encourage more. I know the committee members are working at getting out the word about the discussion points that were in the first two meetings, and this online survey, and we are going to be hearing back from them, I think, if there's some proposals for any other kind of outreach that we need to do. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. The second set of meetings are scheduled for tomorrow and this coming Sunday. Both meetings will focus on the use of public space, access, and mobility options on the site. And again, there'll be an online survey related to those topics. The meetings are the same. They cover the same information, so you don't have to go to both. The meeting tomorrow is from 7:00 to 9:00 in the azalea room here, and on Sunday, it's from 3:00 to 5:00 at the fire station meeting room. So we're still hearing back, I think, from some of the members, but I'm looking forward to your comments as well on that. The next thing I just want to mention is that we've had some discussions about the racial equity impact statement that the, that was discussed coming out of the council retreat. We've done training of our staff and had discussions internally about that subject. We know that there's still challenges with coming up determining the impact of council actions on various racial groups, because we have a lack of some data, but we want to move forward on this. And so we're looking at the first agenda packages that would include the racial equity impact statement, beginning with the April 5th council meeting for my budget presentation. So that's what we're looking for.
Can we put this out on social media that we're doing this?
Absolutely.
Extremely important.
I think it's really going to be exciting.
I was actually thinking we should have a city blog on this to explain and go through it, so.
I would love to have a volunteer.
[laughing]
But yeah--
See right to first.
Councilmember Smith, you're self-elected there. I'm happy to work with anyone on that. I think that'd be, I think that that would be great. It will be really interesting, and as we've discussed, it's a little bit, it's, I think it's gonna, we're gonna see how it evolves, and if there's some difficulties with some of that information, and we'll share it and learn from it.
Because my understanding, we will be only the second jurisdiction in the region to do this.
Perfect.
Perfect. Wonderful.
Thank you.
If I could ask the city manager, next time we report out on the feedback on the Tacoma Junction, if we could get a breakdown on, by Ward--
Sure.
--so that we can think about if there are some places we need to focus outreach.
Yeah, and I actually want to see some breakdown on the other categories as well.
Yeah, exactly. And then on the meeting on the new AV bikeway project, I just want to make sure word was given to our Safe Roadways Committee, and so--
Yes.
Yep, got it. Perfect. All right.
I have a follow-up question.
Oh, go ahead.
The process to hire someone in Rockville?
I have not there yet.
Could we put it on the weekly update that you provide?
Absolutely.
As a service standard thing? Thank you.
I ask this, and that is, what is the status of filling the position of Urban Forest Manager?
I'll find out. I know we're really, really, really close, but--
That's good enough. Really, really, really close. Three realises, plenty close.
I was, I was, too. But actually, maybe what would be helpful, because I know there are a number of positions. I know we just filled one in our housing department. Maybe just keeping in the managers an update of like--
That's a good idea. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, what positions are, are we getting ready to advertise for? What ones have been filled? What are still out there? Just so that we keep ourselves apprised of that, especially as we go into the budgets. Great. All right. Thank you for that update. Now, we will move to our legislative update. I will turn it over to Councilmember Smith. Nope, I need to, yeah, you're, no, you're not, I'm sorry. No, you're on.
Mayor, there's very little to update. Right now, the bills are going through the hearing process. This past week, I had the opportunity to chair the Legislative Committee, because our Chair, Mayor Bridget Newton, was working on the Stormwater Bill. So the only thing that I would like to add is, we discussed this bill last week, House Bill 1374, from our own delegate, Janelle Wilkins. The committee did consider this bill, and we voted to support with an amendment, and that will be the same amendment that we agreed to as a council. So that's it.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. I don't think we have any other things at the mo, yeah, Councilmember Schultz?
There's, there is or was a bill with regard to polystyrene, a statewide polystyrene.
Yes.
Have been unable to find any new information on the legislative website. Do you know anything about that?
Look, I think the hearing has happened, but nothing other than that.
Yeah. All right.
But Senator Kagan was at the luncheon. I just didn't have the chance to talk to him.
Yeah. They were coming and going so fast.
Okay, great. All right. Now, we'll move on to our voting session. The only thing we have tonight is a consent agenda, the number of items in it. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
So move.
Councilmember Smith, move. Councilmember May, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, consent agenda passes. And they were all resolutions, so it's good. Okay, now we're on to our work session. Tonight, we have a work session, a presentation and discussion regarding subdivision application for the property on the northeast quadrant of Ethan Allen Avenue and Jackson.
Hello. We are joined this evening by the, I thought everybody knew me. I'm Roz Grigsby, Community Development Manager in the Planning and Development Services in Housing and Community Development. We are joined tonight by the property owner, Mr. Ben Davis on your far right, the engineer, Mr. Charles Grimsley, sitting in the middle, and the architect, Rick Vitula, closest to me. And I thought they would make, they have a presentation prepared, and then they and I will be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. City Council members and-- City Council members and.
I think if you're gonna stand, we may ask you to move over.
Better be here.
Yeah, it might be better.
Can you turn this a little bit?
Yeah. How's that?
You can kind of see the audience and the council?
That way the microphone will pick you up. How's that?
All right.
Perfect.
I'll start again. Thank you, Mayor Stewart. City Council members, Tacoma Park residents. Thank you for this opportunity to present our proposal for the development of Ethan Allen and Jackson Corner. Certainly here, several times, as I've worked in the city for more than 10 years, developing or doing renovations for residents of Tacoma, that the Ethan Allen-Jackson Corner, they're tired of hearing the, the construction there, the staging. So after passing by so many times, I said, why don't I take it on? So, I am concerned about Tacoma Park, I work here, and probably will live here, I hate to be on air with that, but probably will live here before too long. I'd like to start off by introducing Charles Grimsley, who will walk us through the first three slides of the presentation.
I'm Charles Grimsley with Landmark Engineering. I'm civil engineer, surveyor, and planner for working at this project. The parcel is not that large, and when we started to look at it, it was a couple of concerns. Can the configuration and geometry be allowed, you know, it, it could subdivide, because we thought it's too big for just to have one house, because the building envelope would be quite large. And so, Mr. Davis wanted to look at the possibility to, to subdivide the property. And, so the, there, there is a small dedication that's got to be made on Ethan Allen Avenue. The master plan calls for that right-of-way to be 50 feet, and currently, it's 40 feet. So, the dedication that's required on our side of the street is an additional five feet. So, the, the lot line that's there now would be set back another five feet, and that established the overall limit. From there, we then looked at, in the R60 zone, it requires a minimum 6,000 square-foot lot, and the, the lot that's on the corner is a little bigger, because that lot has to have setback, frontage setback from both streets. So, the, the minimum setback is, in the R60 zone, is 25 feet from a public right-of-way. So, each corner, or each side that fronts Ethan Allen and Jackson, has a 25-foot setback. And, I guess, the, one of the things that concerned us also was, there isn't the established building line code in the Montgomery County zoning code. And, when we surveyed this property, we extended the survey down both streets to try and determine where are the existing structures, and would there be an established building line that would be required? And, we had coordinated that and provided you the information with the County Zoning Office, and they determined that, from the location of the structures that are there, that the code would indicate that there is no established building line, that you would just have to meet the minimum building restriction line of 25 feet from the right-of-way line of Ethan Allen, and also from Jackson Avenue. And so, that's how we've, you know, established the lot configurations. The, there was concern by the city, as well as Montgomery County or the Park and Planning Commission, about the, the trees on the lot, and they specifically wanted to save, there's a large specimen tree on the rear of what's shown as proposed Lot 2. Lot 2 is the upper lot that faces on Jackson, and Lot 1 is the one that's on the corner. So, we set about working with the Tacoma Park Arborist and developed a TreeSave Plan, and so it, it was accomplished to save that large specimen tree on the lot, as well as protect large trees that were on adjacent property that are going to be provided protection with, with TreeSave implementation. So with that, we, we got an approved TreeSave Plan from the city, and then that went to Park and Planning, and they reviewed it, they approved the TreeSave Plan as well, and then issued an exemption from forest conservation because of the size of the property. The architect, who will speak, I guess, in a minute or two about the houses, provided us preliminary footprints of what the houses could be on the lots, and then citing those, and working with the TreeSave requirement, it, it sort of puts the houses kind of close together, but not too close together. Obviously, they meet the zoning, but we're trying to, in saving the tree on Lot 2, it requires that house to move a little closer to the middle lot line. We then, once we developed this plan, we then prepared a stormwater concept plan, which had to be filed with the city engineer, and he reviewed that plan, and he had several comments on it that were not significant. We, we can meet our stormwater management, but once, once we've gotten through the review process with Park and Planning, the preliminary review process, we then saw there were really no significant changes, and so, we made a revised supplemental of the stormwater concept to the city engineer. It's probably been close to a couple of weeks ago, and would expect to get that approved. So, the lots will meet their full stormwater management requirement in accordance with the state and county requirements. The properties will be served by public water and sewer, obviously. There's water main on Jackson Avenue that will make connections from the water main to each house, and there needs to be a short sanitary sewer connection up Jackson Avenue to come to these two lots, and they'll then get sewer connections into that public extension of the sewer. I think that's kind of basically it for the several items. It is, is the review of the Park and Planning Commission, they've gone through a Development Review Committee meeting, they wanted us now to, obviously, meet with the city, present the plan, and then get any feedback from the city before they then are ready to prepare their report to go to the planning boards.
This is a deck.
I'm Rick, Rick Vitulio, I'm, I'm consulting architect for this project. I'm sorry. I don't have a lot to actually present, but I'm here to answer questions. My role here was to change the architecture from what was given to me to reflect more what Tacoma Park represents in terms of the architectural style, Victorian, Craftsman, together, I mean, I won't say it's Victorian, or I won't say it's Craftsman, but it has elements of both, and also to make sure that the facades that face both Jackson and Ethan Allen have a, have elements of a residential character, that they don't look like a side of a house, but it looks like it belongs along a streetfront. And also, just one, one other point, we did not fill out the entire buildable area of, of each lot. They're actually fairly large lots for what's representative in Tacoma Park. The typical lot in Tacoma Park is more like 50 feet wide. These are 60 and 70 feet wide lots, so they're actually fairly large for what's typical in Tacoma Park. And with the buildable area, we didn't, we didn't fill it out to the maximum extent that might be done in other areas where the land is much, much more valuable. So, are there any questions about that?
Did you have an example of the Ethan Allen side of this house?
Do it in advance. This, this house is the one further down Jackson, the one that's shown there. And that's the, that's the facade on the, I don't know what you can see in front of you, but on the far right of the, the, the lower right image on that plan, oh, sorry. There you go.
Right, thank you.
So the lower right image, the right side of that, of that image is facing Ethan Allen. Thank you. So made sure that there was anustration in that, in that facade that faces Ethan Allen, that it doesn't, it isn't just the blank side of the house, which you see in a lot of new, new developments. And to make sure that the massing wasn't just a flat face of a house, which also can be very common, to make sure it's broken up and has some interest on all, on all elevations.
Let's see, Councilmember Smith has a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. What's the square footage of each proposed?
About 1,700.
1,700, and how many bedrooms?
I think. Goal is four and three.
Four and three, okay. And it's gonna be two stories with a basement, or just two stories?
Two stories with a basement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, you mentioned that it was 60 to 70 feet, that's a long Jackson, is that right? Each of those two?
Long Jackson. Yeah.
So.
The corner lot's 70, the, the one.
So it looks like, are they split, would they be split evenly? In other words, it says on the material here that 16,132 square feet total, that lot, would that be divided exactly in half, or, or not quite?
No, it's not exactly. It could not be cut in half equally because of the TreeSave to try to preserve the white oak in the back corner of the lot.
So that one would be a little smaller, the, the one would, or would it be larger?
The, the lot, inside lot is smaller than the outside lot.
Okay.
Or the corner lot.
Just wanted, from the information that's on the, the sheet, it talks about Lot 1 being 8,365 square feet, Lot 2, 7,170 square feet.
Okay. And it may be too soon to know this, but we talk a lot about affordable housing, do we have a sense for how much these houses would, would sell for?
At least 800.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you for this information. It, it's, it's my understanding that the, all the houses on Ethan Allen, down towards New Hampshire, on that side of the street, all have fronts facing Ethan Allen. And that, from the testimony given by one of our speakers earlier, that this would be the first and perhaps only house on that stretch of road between New Hampshire and Jackson, perhaps all the way, I don't know, beyond that, because a lot of houses up further close to the Carroll Avenue are behind fences, so you can't even tell too much. That, 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 that presents a concern, and so I was wondering if I could ask you this question, and that is, is that disregarding the size of the lots and the positioning, why wouldn't it not be possible to take the house on Lot 1, keep the same basic floor plan, and put, put, put the main entrance in the facade, you know, the, what's called the front of the house facing Ethan, Ethan Allen? I'm sure it would obviously require some reconfiguration of the first floor arrangement, but at least, without changing setbacks necessarily, it seems to me that that would be possibly something that might be able to be considered, that would at least, if it can't go back to the existing building line to, like, for the house that's next to, to the right, it might at least help a little bit in terms of appearances and aesthetics.
So the concern is that, as you're going down Ethan Allen, that you don't see the front of the house?
Yes. That was brought up. I mean, this is not my, my neighborhood, it's not my ward. I am vaguely familiar with the, with the eclectic architecture, as I'm sure you're very familiar with it, having studied it, rather than having a side of a house facing New, Jack, Ethan Allen.
Mm-hmm. I think most, I think if you'll, if you'll notice, there's, there's sort of two points. Most side streets, and I'll call Jackson a side street, that have an intersection at a, at a, at a higher level road, which is what Ethan Allen is. Most of the houses that front on the side street, or that are on the corner of the side street and the main street, do front on the side street. Particularly in this, in this instance, I mean, you, you would want the house to front more on Jackson, just from an access aspect. The driveway would want to be off of Jackson. The main entry would want to be off of Jackson. You don't, certainly don't want to try to exit that property onto Ethan Allen, you would never get out. I know there's, I know there's a stop sign there, but.
No, I understand that. I'm not talking about moving the driveway at all. I agree with you on that, I'm just talking about making the front be, and this, this is all about aesthetics.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, I think a general, the general rule is that when a, a house on a corner usually does front the side street, and you'll, if you go through Tacoma Park in general, almost every house on corners face the lesser street, if you will. So, we're not breaking any rules by, by directing it towards Jackson here. And I think our, another architectural point is that we were trying to create an interesting facade along Ethan Allen, that it wasn't going to be just the side of the house.
Yeah.
That was a secondary element, but, you know, and also, it's a very busy road. I don't, I think, in terms of trying to sell it to somebody, they're not going to want to front onto a Maryland State Highway, they'd rather front onto a side street, so.
Thank you.
But I see your point about aesthetics, you, you know.
Yeah, that's really what I'm talking about.
The main point, the main, the main access is down Ethan Allen, and that's where most of the people are going to.
We know a lot of, a lot of homeowners never use their front door, except to let in the guests and the mailman.
Right.
You know, depending on the positioning of a house, sometimes the side door gets to be the actual, and that might be the case, you could do here.
Right.
But, enough, I, thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for being here tonight, everyone. The, my biggest concern is on the same issue that Councilmember Schultz was just raising, but particularly, as you drive, it appears based on the drawings, as you drive up Ethan Allen from east to west, what you will see are relatively large lawns on house after house after house as you go, and then you will see a two-story structure that is far closer to the street than any other structure that you've seen along. That, that to me is like the, the caricature definition of building line.
Yep.
And it's not the front of a house, it's the side of a house. And, one of the residents spoke earlier about the impacts, their perceived impacts to their property. If I were to walk out my front door and be staring at the back of someone else's house at, at these distances, you know, I would also be very concerned, and I would think that would affect the value of my property.
Yeah, sure.
So it's both the, the neighborhood look and feel, and then for the particular residents, and I know Ms. Dawn Cannon, who lives in the house downhill on Jackson, also could not be here tonight, I think she's working, but she had expressed concern. And so, were the property, to Councilmember Schultz's point, facing Jackson, but it were only one house, and so the house were further back, then you wouldn't have this, this compound interest issue of, you know, of the, the, the visual impact of a house, you know, way closer to the street. But there's, you know, both of those issues, sod by sod.
Sure.
For the, for Ms. Grigsby, the county's documentation referred to measuring five adjoining houses, so there's, there's a, there's varying standards under county policy for figuring out building line, there's, including one for corner lots, there's one that refers to 300 feet.
Right, the code actually says 300 feet.
300 feet. So what are the, which are the five properties? They're all five properties on that side of that block, or?
It's, yeah, it's.
It's, yeah, it's three hundred feet on both sides.
Both directions.
So, also across Jackson, but on the same side of the block, same side of Ethan Allen as the proposed property.
So, the... Not across the street.
The, the information we have in the packet says, uh, only two of the five houses on this side of, uh, only two of the five houses, I think, I, I won't, I can't remember exactly what it says, only two of the five houses are, meet this larger setback, therefore there is no setback. I can pull it up.
The zoning code says that a majority has to be built to a different, a bigger setback than the twenty-five feet.
Right.
And that there isn't a majority, it's two of the five have a bigger setback.
But, but what are the five?
Which houses? I don't have that in front of me, I have a schematic drawing.
I mean, 'cause there's at least, what appear to be, based on Google Maps and three hundred feet, there appear to be four, four houses along the block on that side of the street, all of which are greater than twenty-five or thirty feet from the street.
It's not that they...
Terrifying us.
No, no, sorry. It's, the, the issue is not that they be greater than twenty-five, it's that it be consistent.
Right.
That if they're all set at thirty-five feet back...
So, there's multiple houses...
That becomes the established building line.
Yeah, we could, we could pull up Google Maps right now, but there's, there's multiple houses, at least four houses down the street on that side, that are the same distance apart, away from the street.
I haven't gone to that level of detail, the county, uh, planning staff have.
Right.
And they have confirmed that there is not an established building line.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's satellite image on Google Maps, they're, they're the same distance from the street as, uh, Mr. Lamb's house, for an extended distance down that block.
Well, you're, they're close, there's no doubt, they're, they are close. And looking at a, a, you know, aerial map, you would say they seem to be in line, but the requirement is that you survey the property, you survey the right-of-way line, you survey the structures, and that's what we did. So, it's based on, and, and we do establish building lines often, and that's the, the requirement. We're licensed surveyors, so we do accurate surveying and locating the property lines and locating the structures. And then where those structures fall is where you have to create the average. So, it has to follow the code, and that's, that's what we provided them.
If I may, I think that that's an item that we need to come back with some information from the county on. I appreciate that, you know, we've had some of the discussion, but I think it is something that I'd like to get confirmed, maybe from something directly from them. The, the other thing I just wanted to mention is that, as we go through this, and then we did provide some information in your package this evening, that talks about the kinds of things that are looked at in a subdivision application, and some things that are, the things that are looked at in site plan, uh, applications. As we go forward and make some determination about what the position would be of the city council, those are the kinds of items that we would make comments on, for it to have the, the kind of weight that would be considered within the county's actions.
Thanks, and just to close my comments, I, I, every piece of public input that I received said they support, everyone supports building a house on the lot. There were some people who supported the subdivision as planned, others indicated support for affordable housing, and others, as we heard tonight, indicate support for only one house. But I just wanted to clarify that, uh, because I think it's significant, that everyone wants to see building happen on that lot, and so I appreciate your, your, your seeing that problem and, and taking action.
Councilmember Cressy?
Thanks, Mayor, thank you all for being here, and, uh, it's clear that you've put in a lot of work and effort into this, and a lot of, uh, dollars as well. I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilmember Mail said. Some of the comments that I've received from the community, Ward 3 residents, I think, frequent this intersection quite a bit, um, and find it to be an eyesore and want development there. I think my colleagues have done an effective job of asking the questions that I had, but a question for you, Mr. Davis, assuming this body disapproves of this, uh, plan, uh, and the planning board agrees, what is your plan B, if you have one, with that lot?
The, the setback is a challenge, I think, that you guys have some objection to. So, when we go back through, and if the setback were in line with the house next to it, then I would end up building still two houses, but one would be a far inferior house, and I think you would not want to see that house in your neighborhood. But it would be a requirement for me, as I did not inherit the land. And there are significant, uh, building costs, one, to bring utilities onto the property, and to actually build the structures.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, one other question that I didn't ask before. Would it be possible, if you look at the shape of a lot and bisect it the other way, you'd have another narrow at the front on Ethan Allen, long lot stretching back, so you could put a house further back, probably in line with the, with the gentleman's, um, house where it currently is, and then you could still have another house with a sort of wider, less deep lot off of Jackson. So, with the same sizes, it wouldn't, the tree issue wouldn't come up, is that something that was considered?
Yes.
Okay, are you, are you saying, if you turn the orientation of the lots to face Ethan Allen Avenue?
Well, one would face Ethan Allen, the other would run along Jackson.
No, in configuration, it wouldn't meet the zoning to do that.
It wouldn't what?
It would not meet the zoning regulation to do that.
In what way?
Um, just for, for the size and the setbacks, I mean, it, it just, it would not meet, you know, the regulation to have a lot that's, because we couldn't, we couldn't have lots that would, that would be able to be subdivided down a line from Ethan Allen, because it's too narrow, because there are sixty lots, um, it would not meet the minimum requirement for lot widths that go in the other direction it does, so, that's...
I mean, just looking at the schematic here, and I don't know if these are to scale, but it looks like it would be the same width as the one next to it.
What's the...
Just my eyeball eye.
It may be affected also by the setback on Jackson, that's required.
Eight seventy-four?
This, this one, thirty-five, hey?
Nineteen, there you go. I believe it's, I believe it's about twenty feet narrower along Ethan Allen than it is along Jackson, and that's all the difference.
And we tried, we tried all sorts of options. When we met with the Montgomery County Planning Board in a pre-conso before purchase, uh, they really did not want us having driveways on Ethan Allen.
Mm-hmm, makes sense.
So, the actual numbers are, it's about a hundred and twenty feet along Ethan Allen and a hundred and thirty-five along Jackson, so it's not a square, it's not...
Yeah, but actually, it's, it's a hundred and nineteen and a half feet along Ethan Allen, and the lots have to be at least sixty, so, couldn't have, two sixty-foot lots would not meet the requirement.
Well, I, I guess I would just say, if we're here, if we're here to make a variance, why not that, since my, my street's only, my lot's only fifty feet wide, seems fine.
I don't think...
But it's not...
Put that out there.
Councilmember Schultz, do you have another question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Ms. Grinsby, if I may, what exactly is our purview vis-à-vis the subdivision in relation to the county planning board? I mean, what are the elements that they're interested in learning our position on?
As you know, the council can pass a resolution about, really, any feature on a development proposal, and the planning board requires a supermajority of four out of five, rather than three out of five, to approve something in contrast to what the council, city council of, um, resolution states. However, having said that, the county judgments are based on the zoning code and the procedures that are established. And so, if council passes a resolution that, that goes against the zoning code, if they are allowed by right to do something, and council says, but we don't like it, then my expectation would be that the planning board would vote against the council resolution and support what the zoning code allows.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to have that aired, so that we could be sure we understood.
Could I just ask a follow-up question? So, for example, with the drive-through on the proposed Taco Bell, where we were asked our opinion, was that, was a drive-through something that, that property owner was by right allowed to do, that, in other words, it was consistent with, uh, the county rules? And so, they needed a variance, or they needed a, you know, special circumstance, but otherwise they were following the rules?
So, the drive-through, like the subdivision, has a process that comes before the planning board, which is different than by right. If they had a six thousand square foot lot with sixty feet frontage, and they met the setbacks, they would not come before you, and it would not go before the planning board. Because it's a subdivision, as with Taco Bell, because they had a drive-through, it has an extra step of oversight to review that.
But if I might, the drive-through was a special exception, and that's a different thing, that's one where judgment comes more into play than a subdivision. With subdivision, the, um, elements generally are things like, it's a regular-sized dividing thing, you know, we don't have, um, a very strange-shaped lot, we have, the proposal is to rectangular lots. Those are similar to the fact that surrounding properties have rectangular lots. So, there's utilities provided, these are things that are just very standard in subdivision. I think the issues that, um, are being discussed, certainly the setback is something that gets looked at, the amenities that we've talked about, about along Ethan Allen, in terms of having a sidewalk, having a bus stop, those are things that are built into this plan, but are things that would be a judgment or a decision often by the, by the city about what's appropriate for the neighborhood. So, there's those kinds of things. Site plan has a little bit more in terms of design, um, but again, um, these are very standard proposals, and so, the amount of judgment, um, that gets discussed is, is really quite small.
Do, and, sorry, clarification, that one of the, the drawing shows a sidewalk, is the sidewalk something that, um, the company would build, or is it space for a sidewalk?
Yeah, I am going to build a sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, it's required.
And just a clarification, if we have a sidewalk, which is wonderful, so let me say that, I mean, I've heard residents ask about sidewalks, and there's the bus stop there. If we have a sidewalk that begins at a corner but then ends in mid-block, does that create any ADA issues, or no? I guess, because sidewalks have been a debate on Ethan Allen for a while?
It's, right, it's, it's, it does to an extent, but it's, um, important for access to the bus stop, and because it would be installed by the private property owner, I don't think it...
It's gonna be more of a challenge if we were to install it?
I think yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question on this, on the issue of the setback and the materials that, um, staff provided us, um, and it goes to the question that was raised earlier about, I'm trying to understand the, what the county permitting specialist said regarding setbacks on Jackson versus Ethan Allen, because what I have in front of me talks about setbacks on Ethan Allen. Do we have anything about, specifically about the setback on Jackson?
So, the, this is an R-sixty lot, which means it's a resident, zone residential for single-family detached homes, and the setback, frontage setback is twenty-five feet, and the side setback would ordinarily be smaller, but because it's on a corner lot, and so, the side is also the front on Ethan Allen, it is also twenty-five feet.
But, but the, there's, is there, or is there not an established building line along Jackson that is different than twenty-five feet?
I haven't heard in conversation...
It's twenty-five, uh, the survey, you can speak to this, Charles, but the survey for, uh, what's the lady's name? On the back, sorry. The houses along Jackson are twenty-five.
Miss Cannon.
Dawn Cannon.
Okay, and they do look aligned on this, on this plan?
Yeah, no.
For the next home, okay. And, actually, just a question, is, is this a place where you could have a, basically a duplex with a line through a...
Um, not in an R-sixty.
Not in an R-sixty zone, okay.
Unless you had a...
Right, I mean, one of the things that I've seen in other places where this is an issue, is that you actually have a side-by-side, uh, home with the property line that runs between them, so it's like townhouses, but it's just the two, and that can sometimes help make better use of the, of the surrounding land space, but...
Zero lot line, and we were not permitted.
Okay.
Any other questions? I liked it. The chimes. All right, I don't think we have, um, any other questions. I want to thank you for coming this evening. I live fairly close here, and I probably jog past that lot every other day, so I'm glad to see some movement there, uh, to make it, uh, much better, uh, for the community, so thank you for that. And I think we probably want to speak to Ms. Grinsby a little bit more, um, about next steps for council.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming this evening. All right, so, we have, um, on our rolling agenda, tentatively scheduled, whether or not we need a resolution for this, um, not next week, but the week after that. And, um, so if council would like to, after hearing the presentation, asking any questions, want to put forward any ideas, or have a short discussion of whether or not we want a resolution on this, and what might be in that resolution.
If I might, is there a time restriction that we have on this action?
Yeah.
Uh, the county planning staff who's overseeing this, Neil Bronstein, expects me to call him tomorrow to let him know what council is planning on doing. They will not schedule the planning board date until they know if they have more...
I guess the question that I have is normally, when we have something like this, we would have a draft resolution that would then be discussed again by the council before you have a, a voting action, um, and so, I'm wondering if, if there might be an opportunity to have, to come back in work session one other time.
Mm-hmm, is that possible?
I, I'm sure it's possible.
I, I mean, I just don't feel it...
No, I think it's fine, I was just looking at the rolling agenda, and we had it, I thought we were up against a deadline, um, with this, but if we can move, I prefer moving, putting a work session in.
So, I know that the plant, the county planning folks were expecting to put this on the planning board agenda, um, in the next few weeks, so, um...
And my, my concern is just the depth. I mean, the really plain, you know, by eye, distance of the properties, the houses, excuse me, nearby, are all very, very different from what's proposed here, so it's not one or two feet, it's ten, fifteen, or more feet. And so, that five feet, five houses and three hundred feet issue is, I think, really important to confirm.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm actually be interested perhaps even in having the person come to the council, um, from the county that describes the established building line, because I think that that, that would be very useful, um, given this particular situation.
And I would just indicate that, sorry, I'm jumping in.
That's good.
Okay, that, you know, from my perspective, that building line is more important than the tree on the back of the lower lot. Uh, so, the impact on neighboring property values, um, the impact on the aesthetics for anyone using that road, that those impacts associated with two eight-hundred thousand dollar houses being built on that site, um, is, if we had to make an adjustment, it would be toward the tree, not toward the road, not toward Ethan Allen.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz, did you have, do you have another?
Yeah, I was just going to say, one of the two things was just exactly what Mr. Mail said, was that, the tree, from what I can read on this thing, is a twenty-six, twenty-five inch caliper tree, it's a good-sized tree, but it's still nevertheless mortal. And, you know, while trees are like sacred cows in, in this city, uh, we, it seems like that tree is kind of determinative of some of what we're looking at here, in terms of distances from Ethan Allen Avenue. Because if they could move lot two, the house on lot two, backwards to the, I guess, to the topper part of the page, then they'd be able to move the other house a little further back from Ethan Allen. The, the, the other comment was that, I, if we're gonna have a work session, I mean, we... The, the other comment was that, I, if we're gonna have a work session, I mean, we could ask, you know, ourselves about why a single house on that property is not financially feasible, because when you're only building one house, it doesn't cost as much as building two houses, so there's still profit to be made, and there's a house built precisely behind my house on New Hampshire Avenue, brand-new, just finished construction a few months ago, hasn't sold. It, it has, it's four levels, and the bottom level is a, built as a complete outside accessible dwelling unit, if the owner wants to have an apartment in the basement, two-car garage, and the contractor said, yeah, the house will probably sell for $800,000, at which time I gulped. But I, just to be, just for, for the owner, Mr. Davis, to sort of say, well, we can only do this with two houses, I'm not completely persuaded.
I guess the question that, I appreciate that. I guess the question that would be very interesting is to identify if there's movement on the county's side or the builder's side about sacrificing the tree and what that might mean.
My understanding is that when the county evaluates this, they check to see that all the requirements are met. I don't think they weigh, if you meet the tree requirement, you know, will, will diminish the tree requirement in order to meet a bigger setback requirement. I think they say, did you meet, did you get your tree save plan? They did. Did you meet your forest conservation? They got their exemption. Did you meet the setback?
Right. I, I guess the...
I guess the question is, maybe if I phrase it differently, I'm hearing, though we didn't do a show of hands, from my colleagues here, concern about the setbacks and how it's going to look. So, I guess the question may be for the folks at the county level, if you said they're expecting a call from you tomorrow, is to say, the sense of the council was they're concerned about the setback. You say they meet the 25-foot requirement, but where the, is it building line? The building line is, they're questioning that and whether or not this, as drawn here, would actually have a negative impact on the surrounding houses. I think that's a sense of what I'm hearing from council this evening, and so if that's enough to go back to the county and say, you know, this is, this is the sense of the council after hearing the presentation, and get more information from them, and then I think we could have a work session with more information and perhaps a draft resolution that goes in that direction. If we get more information from the county, we may decide we don't need a resolution at all, and if the county's like, well, nope, they meet the requirement, then we can make our sentiment known, and they can make their decision.
So, I can, obviously, we'll be talking to the county folks tomorrow, and I will send council any additional information I have. Do we need another work session in order to say we're not weighing in on a resolution?
I really do, I really do feel that we need some information back from the county. I just feel, I would feel much more comfortable getting, getting a little bit more information back. I'm happy to talk to you about that, but I, I think that it would be best to bring it back.
And I think there's a lot of community interest, concern, that having another, if we're not at a deadline, where we had to vote on this in two weeks, if we could have another work session, I think that would be appropriate. I have a couple of folks, councilmember Siemens, and then...
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. One, as the mayor has said, I feel like we didn't have all the information we need, and I look forward to getting more information. The, the lot lines along Ethan Allen, as councilmember Mail said, is, is one thing that would be helpful, because it does appear, looking down from the satellite image, that they, there is a kind of a standard there. But the other thing that I thought would be interesting to know is to have on the maps that are given here, some of the other surrounding houses, including the houses on the corner of Jackson and Boyd, because they also, it's also a corner, and kind of what is the community standard there, I think would be helpful. The other thing I wanted to say is that looking at the lot size, I think it might be a disservice to say, hey, just build one house there. That is a heck of a big lot compared to the other lots in the neighborhood, and that $800,000 house might be a 13, a $1.3 million house that is completely inappropriate for the neighborhood. So, I'd be careful what we wish for on that. And then I also wanted to comment on the not-so-veiled threat that if, if you make me move the lot line back, I'm gonna build two houses, and you're not gonna like that second one I build. It, just looking at the surrounding homes, it looks like a house that is similar to the house, the next, the first house on Jackson right now, if you built one like that on that, that second lot, that everything would fit together pretty well with the lot lines, so, just a comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just in line with what councilmember Siemens just said, maybe two $800,000 houses isn't really what we need, and maybe one, a smaller one, that someone might be able to afford, would actually be nice. So, I'm kind of interested in his Plan B. I don't know if it was a veiled threat, but I'd, I'd be curious to see what Plan B would look like, and, you know, we talk a lot about trying to find ways for people to afford coming here. I'm just not sure two $800,000 houses is going to add to that. So, to the degree that we can see what a Plan B would look like at some point, I'd be interested in that.
Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, just last comments. If the, if the city could also provide information, which I think is public record on the sale value of the lot, I think it was in foreclosure, but whatever, that price would be informative, I think, for us. And then just noting, as a, as a closing comment, there have been two new larger houses built on the same side of the street over the past maybe four years, almost within sight of this property. There's a subdivision, I think it's three properties being subdivided into five properties, 12, maybe 12 houses down, and those don't raise the issues that we're having here. They don't overall affect the, the line of houses on the street, you know, so this, this is something different, I think.
Yeah.
Do you have what you need, do you think?
Yeah.
Great.
I'll come back with more details.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, we're gonna move on to our second work session this evening, and that is a review of New Hampshire Avenue plans and next steps.
So, I have the privilege of introducing our new city planner. This is Dan Sonenklar. He is in his second week, so we thought we'd get him warmed up with his presentation to council.
He's coming for council.
He comes to us with a lot of experience. He worked with MNC PPC in Prince George's. He's worked with MW COG for four years, and most recently, he was in Bogota, Columbia with Bloomberg Philanthropies, working on transportation alternatives in the city there. So, we're very pleased to have him, and I leave you in his capable hands.
Thank you, Roz. Do you all have the presentation up on the screens in front of you?
Not yet.
Yeah, yes.
I think Ian's getting that. I did include, did make copies for you, it's included in here, so in case you want to make notes.
Okay. Well, as Rozlyn said, or excuse me, as Ms. Grinsby mentioned, my name is Dan Sonenklar, and I am the new planner here in Tacoma Park, and tonight I will be presenting on redevelopment recommendations and progress along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. This is from University Boulevard on down to the DC line. I'll start by giving a general overview of the area and take a brief look at projects that have been completed and that are underway that would affect this area specifically. So, this slide shows the entire corridor, and it shows that there are two plans that affect the development along that corridor. The first is the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Plan, which was approved in 2012 by the Montgomery County Planning Department, and it included recommendations along the northern portion of the corridor from University Boulevard to Sligo Creek Parkway. The second plan that addresses the southern portion of the corridor was approved in 2008, and it was the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan, and that was approved by the City Council of Tacoma Park, and it provides a vision for the redevelopment along that part of the corridor from Sligo Creek to the DC line. In tandem, these two documents illustrate all plans and recommendations for the development along the corridor, and together, together create a vision of, of the future of New Hampshire Avenue. Speaking of a vision, I included here the vision that was put forth in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Plan. I thought it was a, a good general overview of what both plans tried to put forward, and I'll, I'll read it aloud. It is to create a transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly community that celebrates and builds on the cultural diversity of the crossroads community. Smart growth and transit-oriented development support the integration of mixed land uses into communities as a critical, critical component of achieving a better place to live. And it goes on to say that this plan reduces automobile dependency by locating a mix of uses convenient to homes and adjacent transit, and by providing alternatives for walking, cycling, and transit within a physical environment that meets the community's needs. Looking at some more specific recommendations, I'll, I'll begin with general recommendations. This slide contains a, a section plan that was in the adopted Tacoma Langley Crossroads Plan. The section highlights a 150-foot right-of-way with six travel lanes, three in each direction, and two access lanes on each side, one in each direction. It also includes 15-foot sidewalks with parallel parking, three green medians separating different sections of the roadway, new crossroads, or new cross streets to support pedestrian access, and new bike, bike lanes from University to Sligo Creek. Similarly, on this slide is a section of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor south of Sligo Creek Parkway. Again, it's a 150-foot right-of-way, but with four travel lanes, two in each direction, a 12-foot central safety, safety strip or median, turning lanes at intersections, side medians of 16 feet, two lanes, two side lanes, one in each direction with parallel parking that serves as more of a local or pedestrian zone, and enhanced public transit waiting areas. Both plans document, recommend, or both planning documents recommend the inclusion of a number of streetscape enhancements to make the spaces much more friendly to all roadway users coming through the area. This includes sidewalks, crosswalks, trails, street trees, landscaping and lighting, and other, other kinds of installations along the entire corridor. In addition, both documents prescribe guidance for land use redevelopment and urban design in each of the areas that they, that they speak to. The Tacoma Langley Crossroads Plan, as illustrated on this slide, advocates for light rail access via the Purple Line, stating that it is a key part of redeveloping the area that will allow Tacoma Park to, to capture a larger amount of the growth in the region. The plan converted all commercially-zoned properties along New Hampshire Avenue to mixed use to try to attract some development, some higher-density development there. The plan also calls for housing for various income levels, as well as installing more sidewalks and bike lanes to encourage non-motorized transportation. The plan stresses using placemaking techniques as well to create an identity to the area, which particularly applies to New Hampshire Avenue here. Similarly, the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan puts forth a number of redevelopment recommendations that are a bit more specific. These include encouraging mixed-use development whenever and wherever possible, building human-scale rather than automobile-scale features, varying building types, building sidewalks, and providing multiple entrances, entrances to buildings along the corridor, including off-street parking, building new market rate and affordable housing, encouraging green building and creating a green identity to the area, greening the corridor with natural features, and including tree canopy along the, the roadway, and also calls for integrating public art into the The two plans together identify corridor-wide recommendations, but also specific recommendations along six sections of New Hampshire Avenue. In the northernmost section, the New Hampshire Avenue falls into an area designated the Crossroads District, which contains parts of the central business districts of Tacoma Langley. This is a primary destination and has a reputation as a, for internationally diverse shops and restaurants, institutions, and multicultural services. Here, the sector plan recommends increasing the density of development substantially, and introduced a generous amount of mixed-use zoning, as we saw a moment ago on, on the overall map. The plan also calls for creating active street edges to engage patrons of the area, and to define the area as a focal point for retail and commercial activity. This can be done, as the plan states, in part by branding and marketing the area. For transportation, the plan recommends ensuring safe, fluid access to the Tacoma, Tacoma Langley Transit Center and the future Purple Line that will go into the area, enhancing sidewalks and side streets to connect future mixed-use development with the close-by residential areas, removing channelized right turns, which encourage higher speeds, and studying left-turn restriction at the intersection of University and New Hampshire. The next section down was named the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor in the plan, which is a bit confusing because the whole thing is the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor, but this area includes predominantly single-family homes on the west side of New Hampshire, and service-oriented commercial motels and high-rise apartments on the east side. In terms of redevelopment in the area, the, the plan recommends redeveloping the commercial uses as mixed use, and providing additional moderately-priced dwelling units where necessary on the east side, and on the west, maintaining the existing residential institutional uses. For transportation, the plan recommends 15-foot sidewalks in the area with public amenities and trees, the inclusion of green streets concepts to make the area more pedestrian-friendly, and installing bicycle facilities along the whole portion. Moving further south, we come into the area that has specific provisions from the New Hampshire Concept Plan, or the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan, which divided the area into four separate sub-areas, two gateways and two environmentally focused. The first section along this part of the corridor is the Sligo Creek area, which is one of the environmentally-focused areas. It contains Sligo Creek to the north, as well as undeveloped environmentally, environmentally-sensitive woodlands and wetlands. For redevelopment in the area, the plan offers a few recommendations. One is to redevelop a small commercial node that is at the corner of Sligo Creek Parkway and New Hampshire, and to neighborhood-serving, community-oriented commercial use. It also calls for installing public amenities along the streets and protecting environmental features and enhancing Sligo Creek itself. As far as transportation for this section, the recommendations include removing the existing sidewalk and installing a multi-use, or an asphalt multi-use trail, and enhancing the intersection with Sligo Creek Parkway, Parkway as a gateway to the communities surrounding. The next section down is the Ethan Allen Gateway, which currently contains commercial properties that were developed in the, from the 50s to the 80s. The area is often viewed by many in Tacoma Park as a detriment for, for its poor condition and the lack of businesses that, that appeal to the community there. The concept plan reimagined this area as a vibrant mixed-use center, and prescribed the redevelopment of the strip center on the southwest corner of Ethan Allen into mixed-use developments. In tandem, it also recommended the creation of a civic space in that mixed-use development, and building new mixed-use linear buildings along New Hampshire Avenue and around the Tacoma Center. It also called for redeveloping small parcels north into medium-density residential and small-scale commercial areas, so to really create a new mixed-use and residential community around this intersection. As far as transportation, the plan calls for creating pedestrian-friendly intersections at the, or a pedestrian-friendly intersection at the entrance to the shopping center, creating new streets and a street grid in the area, and reducing pedestrian crossings while slowing vehicles down. In the next section, which was called the Tacoma Branch Area, this is another one of the environmentally-focused areas. The area contains Sligo Mill Overlook Park, which serves as a green edge between residential neighborhoods and commercial areas south. This also includes the Pepco Substation and the McLaughlin School property. There are a number of different redevelopment recommendations for this area, including increasing screening between public space and the substation, building high-end townhouses and residential infill in the area between Ray Road and the Belford Towers, redeveloping the McLaughlin School property into housing, and that would be a mix of affordable and market rates, building complexes that face Tacoma Branch and take advantage of this natural feature in the area. in the area, and to landscape the Triangle Park near the corner of Prince George's Avenue in order to create, again, a gateway to the community's surrounding. The final area in these plans was the Maryland Gateway, and that touches the D.C. line. This is a collection of retail office and light industrial properties that were also developed between the 50s and the 80s. It includes the seven-story office building anchored by Bank of America currently. The plan recommends redeveloping the commercial buildings into new mixed-use buildings, adding more mixed and upper-income housing, as well as Class A office space to the area, and relocating a lot of the auto services to another area, allowing for redevelopment with a more urban character there. The plan also prescribes the inclusion of a gateway feature, such as a roundabout, a sculpture, or a fountain at the D.C. line. So, exciting stuff. What have we done so far? What kind of progress has been made to date in Tacoma Park? Given that there's a lot of recommendations for all parts along this corridor, we wanted to highlight what's been completed that has moved us towards implementing the vision of these two plans. This slide highlights some of what we've done so far. There's a lot of bullet points, but you can reference all of these after this meeting today as well. A number of further studies and guidance documents have been completed that govern planning decisions along this part of New Hampshire Avenue. Those include the Maryland-New Hampshire Avenue Corridor Economic Development Potential Study that was completed last year. It also includes the New Hampshire Feasibility Study from 2013, the New Hampshire Avenue Streetscape Standards, and the Holton Lane Area Improvement Vision. In order to promote transportation alternatives in the area, there's been a few successes in the area. The Tacoma Langley Transit Center was complete and is now operating at the intersection of New Hampshire and University. Two new bike-share stations have been installed, one next to the Recreation Center and the other on Kirkland Avenue, and other bike amenities have also been installed in the area. Various projects have proceeded in the public realm as well. The Crossroads Farmers Market has been operating for 10 years seasonally. The placemaking features, including streetscaping and a rain garden, have been installed on Holton Lane. One parcel, previously owned by the Washington-McLaughlin School, has been purchased by the city, and the Crossroads Green Space has gone through some major improvements in landscaping. In addition, there's been a few public art projects along New Hampshire Avenue. One is currently underway, the other one along the Holton Lane on the Aldi Building, I believe. In addition, private developers have been active along the corridor. The Hillwood Manners Apartments and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Center both have new owners. The Hampshire Towers has finished renovations recently. The Tacoma Overlook converted to condos over this period of time. It used to be apartment buildings. The Walgreens was a new development along New Hampshire and University, and the Guzzini Store was rebuilt in this period of time. And so, future plans underway. A number of other projects and programs are currently underway in the coming years, this year and coming years. These include the completion of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. This is for the city as a whole but will contain a lot of recommendations along the New Hampshire corridor. An agreement has been signed with Cloud Burst Group to complete this plan, and its deliverables include a number of useful items, such as reviewing the housing and economic development programs of the city and identifying gaps, identification of prime redevelopment sites throughout the city, ways to expand public-private partnerships, and the creationship of a program to make businesses more viable. This should be completed in September, October of 2017, and its implementation should follow shortly thereafter. Community marketing campaign will be also designated, and the details will be firmed up in that strategic planning process. A business retention and expansion program is being developed that looks at building better one-on-one relationships with businesses in the area, and this project has been extended out through FY 2018. In addition, we plan on completing a number of bike studies. One is the Bike Master Plan with Montgomery County and the redesign of bikeways for the city that is currently underway. One of the, one thing that's coming up in the very near future is the construction of the Ethan Allen Avenue Streetscape Improvements. Designs for the improvements have been complete, and the construction is up for bid currently. And finally, one of the future plans is the Identification of Redevelopment Partners for the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. And in April of this year, we should be receiving letters of interest, and those people should be presenting to council by mid-June or so. So that's all I have for now. I'm happy to take questions. I might redirect them to my colleagues here since this is my eighth day, but I am happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Great. I'd like to just say a couple words. And one of the things that we wanted to do was to make sure that the, as we start really having some discussions about economic development, that we get a kind of refresher on what's in place, get access, and there's links through the agenda item to the actual plans, so you can look into the greater detail. One of the things that I think is an important feature or element is that the city's not in control of all of this. Some portions are county-controlled sector plans, either Montgomery County or Prince George's County. The section of Ethan Allen, I mean, the section of New Hampshire Avenue north of Ethan Allen and East West Highway to University, both sides of New Hampshire Avenue are in the city limits of Tacoma Park and in Montgomery County. South of 410, one section is in the city on the western side of the right-of-way, but the entire right-of-way of New Hampshire Avenue and the eastern side of New Hampshire Avenue is in Prince George's County, and we have to defer to their processes for those things. We have had a lot of coordination in working with the two counties on this over the years, but it's been a while since we've kind of discussed it. And so, I wanted to make sure that kind of we have in one place links to this information and get refreshed as we get ready to do some new things.
Great. Okay. Let's see, Councilmember Smith first.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to welcome you to the city.
Thank you.
We haven't had a planner for a while now, so it's good that you're here. You mentioned, and thank you for the presentation, you mentioned relocating auto services. Is that through some incentive? How would you go about that? Or is that just supposed to happen?
So, there were not specifics outlined by the planning documents that indicated that it should be done, but, I'm sorry? Oh, the strategic planning process that is currently underway should identify the strategies that can be used to move those businesses.
Okay. One thing you did mention, the business potential study that was done by the state. Have you had a chance to read it?
I looked over it. I did not have a chance to absorb everything that was in it because it's quite, it's got a lot of information in it. Is there anything specific that you want to ask about it?
The price tag is a lot of money, right? And the only way I see that this happens is the counties have to become partners, that's Montgomery and Prince George's, and the state of Maryland has to be a partner in this project, and potentially even the federal government. You used to work for COG, right? And were you staff for the Transportation Planning Board?
Yes.
So you're familiar with the constrained long-range plan?
Very.
Right. Do you think that this project would be something for the constrained long-range plan?
So, this project, depending on if it is determined to be regionally significant or not, and that depends on the extent of what will go into it. If it is a large transportation investment, then I would say that yes, it should get included in the regional modeling that follows the constrained long-range transportation plan. But if it is more about developing businesses along the sides of our New Hampshire Avenue that are outside of the right-of-way, they wouldn't necessarily get included in that plan.
And I think that this is a transportation project because of the Purple Line.
Okay.
I would ask you to think about this and draft a letter to COG and put this project on the plan.
It's probably not his call to do that, but if I might, I mean, I think part of this, the New Hampshire Avenue plan includes bus rapid transit, it includes, you know, it also fits into the larger scheme. And so, we've certainly lobbied in the past for Montgomery County to get the bus rapid transit project moving along on that. I think that the most important thing probably is to get the two counties to also lobby for it to go into the constrained long-range plan. I mean, you know, that's, I think that's where we're going to need to get the selling really done.
Right. You know, I've talked to members of the Prince George's County Council about putting this on their priority list for their transportation projects that go to MDOT. But, you know, we need to also do something, you know, because there are a lot of projects, as you know, there are over 500 projects on the plan. And if you don't get in there, you're not going to be considered. All right. So, those are my questions. Thank you so much.
If I could clarify one thing, the plan that was developed by or completed by the state of Maryland this last year was intended to provide the background or the argument that the city and the county and others jurisdictions could use to argue for investment on long New Hampshire Avenue. So, the big numbers that you see are what the property tax potential is if that particular stretch of the highway was developed.
There were also figures in there about the actual construction of the roadway.
Right.
Right. But our primary focus when we were looking at it from an economic development standpoint was to justify investment along that corridor because of the financial impact it would have on the jurisdictions that would see property tax revenues.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Thank you for being here. Welcome to the city, and it's great to hear about your background and other places. Could you just say your last name for me one more time?
Sonnenklar.
Sonnenklar. Thank you, Mr. Sonnenklar. A few sort of comments and questions. The first is that, thinking about the development when it happens, our plans and sector plans, county and city, and the presentation you showed tonight really focuses on three and four-story developments, housing developments, five in some cases. Is that what we wish to be there but not constrained to be that? Or is that really constrained? And I, and my colleagues have heard me say this before, I apologize for saying it again. I contrast the developments going on in Hyattsville where near Home Depot you have seven, eight, nine-story buildings going up, very dense, full, sort of very large, very dense housing, versus the sort of Arts District, Hyattsville, where it's the three and four-story kinds of pictures that you're showing here. And I guess what I want to understand is whether we're showing pictures of what we'd like to see, but at the end of the day, it's going to be driven by market and profit, and we're going to get seven, eight, nine stories or not, and whether there's anything we can do about that.
It's part of the zoning. I mean, the size is the part of the zoning. This is not, this is not, this is what we wish for, but it could go higher. This is what...
So, the zoning says nothing over five stories? What's the, what's the, just provide a little more clarity.
So, it's by property, and I don't have it in front of me, but it caps the height and sets the floor area ratio. So, I think the height capped at most of them is something like 60 feet. Yeah, or, and a 2.5 FAR.
Okay. So, 60 feet is five stories? Okay. And the FAR allows...
Might be 50 feet. I can't remember now, but...
Could you just provide follow-up information on that to give a sense of...
It's all in the sector plan.
But yes, we'll bring it back also verbally.
For the northern part of the New Hampshire Avenue, it's all in the sector plan, property by property.
Okay.
We can get the zoning for the southern part as well.
Okay. And then, in terms of, so some of my questions are about getting information from the department over time, not, I'm not saying immediate response. So, for example, when properties along New Hampshire and University sell large properties? If staff could update us on that, when there's a transaction of a major property that happens and the price, if that information is public? I know we hear about that from time to time, but it would, it would be great to have that information.
I think we typically do, but we can make...
I know we heard about the couple that Mr. Sonnenklar mentioned, but, you know, if there's other transactions, including on the PG County side, that would be of interest. But, for example, another piece of information would be, we may or may not be in some phase of market shift in DC, who knows, partly based on federal government action. There's a lot, there's been a, you know, so far, a successful experiment in Silver Spring in the kind of housing that's being built there, Hyattsville clusters around metro centers. But to the extent that you can provide us with background information on occupancy rates of different kinds of mixed-use communities that are forming and housing that's forming and the kinds of density you see, you know, Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, the D.C. side of Tacoma Park, Hyattsville, you know, sort of what's, a little more granular view of what's happening there, even if it's your expert opinion informed by a little bit of information, that would be helpful.
You mean specifically housing, or you mean mixed-use?
I'm really thinking about making housing work, right? So, imagining that we get what we want in these plans, it is more residents moving to Tacoma Park. That's our goal. And moving to Tacoma Park and living in pedestrian-accessible communities that have services nearby. So, I'm thinking of places nearby that have that kind of mix, but that have taken different strategies to deliver it, you know, again, like bigger, denser aggregations, places that focus on more services. I just, I mean, because I don't do this work for a living, I don't even have any sense for occupancy, even for buildings, you know, next to the Tacoma Metro, for example. So, that kind of information would be helpful, stuff that you may see and take for granted in your sort of day-to-day that would be, I think, informative, at least for me, maybe colleagues.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Would that be part of the strategic plan, like that Cloud Burst is doing? My assumption is that that would be part of that.
There's a section of demographics and sort of market analysis of the area.
And like a comparison to other neighboring, okay, cool.
Great. Just a couple more points. Did we build recreational features into the plan? And what I'm thinking about is children and outdoor play space, play space, free, unstructured kind of spaces. The presentation talked about some of the green spaces we have, Sligo Creek and otherwise. But in terms of incentives associated with housing and mixed-use, you know, is that a part of the, part of the projects at all?
Do you mean, is it part of the plans?
Plan, yeah, yeah.
And are you asking specifically playgrounds, or do you just mean green space?
I'm trying to be a little bit more inclusive, playgrounds, places to kick a ball, places to have a picnic.
Fields, but not, you don't mean the nature conservation area?
No, no, really mean places that people use more intensively than nature areas.
I think there are aspects of it in the, in both the sector plan, which, I don't know if they determine playgrounds, but specifically reference public space and in the concept plan as well, so we can highlight that.
And there's some incentives or for some of the...
There are some...
For some of the developments, you get extra points for providing things like that.
Councilmember Schultz can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in particular in Ward Six, where we have less space within existing residential neighborhoods, more residents would put even greater pressure on the few places we do have. But the same thing is true in parts of Ward Two that border this area. And then, the last question, again, this could be for follow-up. I don't have an in-depth understanding of the way that when a development occurs that includes housing, those developers are required or not required to contribute a little or a lot of money for school construction, future school construction and improvements. We know our schools are, you know, maxed out right now. This development won't happen, nothing, nobody's going to move in for five years or more. So, that's beyond the planning range that they use for school construction, but the Pliny Branch School right here is, the space is too small, so I don't think anyone would envision that site getting a lot bigger. Rolling Terrace is the next most likely school at an elementary level and is a very old facility that really needs improvements. So, I'm interested in that question around how the system works in terms of the fees or the contributions, in thinking about the long-term puzzle of Rolling Terrace and how to get, you know, world-class elementary school in a site that now has a lot of needs.
I think we'll have to get back to you on that. The normal process, and it's kind of old-school planning, is that you create a new subdivision out of old farmland... out of old farmland, and you have to set aside X amount of, either pay for or you set aside money for school or other kinds of assets. Redevelopment doesn't have the same kind of triggers and hasn't, and it may be, there may be some things that are being discussed now, but I think that it's actually a really interesting point as the school district starts to look at more innovative ways to accommodate all the kids in the area, that maybe there is something that, that they need to be thinking about that, that helps accommodate that and address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
You know, I want to say thank you, Mr. Sonenclark, because it sounds like you have been utterly immersed in New Hampshire Avenue for the last eight days that you've been on board, and I...
That's about right.
I'm, I'm really impressed.
Well, thank you.
You've really covered a lot of material, so good for you, and I'm really excited you're here, and I'm looking forward to being of use to you as much as I can. I'm always happy to help correct my colleague, Councilmember May. With regard to the, to the park space, the sector plan, which is transit-oriented development, that's the premise underneath it, does talk about open space, park space, but it doesn't designate it like in a specific, it's sort of like saying it needs to be there, but the developer will, so for now, it's kind of floating, and then the developer will, will find a way to introduce that kind of green space when the site planning goes forward. But on the rest of the New Hampshire Avenue, I really don't know the answer to that question. I want to make clear an important distinction between the sector plan and the concept plan, because I think it's significant. The, the sector plan from Sligo Creek Parkway North to University is part of this county's master plan. It has the force of law, and, and any development that occurs there must comply with the, with the master plan, as, as master, you know, master planning goes in, in, in planning law throughout the United States. The concept plan is a, a vision plan that has been adopted by and endorsed by Montgomery County Planning Board, so it is, it indicates a future, a direction, a vision, obviously, but it doesn't have the force of law, it's not part of the master plan, and so therefore it's probably a bit more amenable, a lot more amenable to alteration as opportunities come upon us. So, that's an important thing to, to, to take into account.
Thank you.
And maybe someday, there might be an adoption of an actual sector plan for that, for that section, but maybe not. Referencing what Councilmember Smith was, was talking about, the, the economic potential, economic development potential study done by the state that we, it was just finished in December, I believe it was, really talks about a growth in property values in that corridor from Eastern Avenue, I think up to Piney Branch Road, which is well outside the, the city boundary, in the range of nine digits or 10 digits in the billions, but let's just say hundreds of millions to be on the conservative side. And that's kind of shocking, but then when you realize that what you described, and we all think of as a new development, a recent development, Walgreens was actually built, opened for business in April of 2011, so it's already been around six years, and it tells you that, how little we have been able to physically realize in terms of non-public investment. Obviously, the transit center there is an enormous investment, but that's a public investment. And, of course, now we have the Taco Bell emerging from the ground, so that's, you know, that's, that's the most recent addition of, of development. But the, the volume of potential tax growth really ought to be a huge flare going up in the eyes of Montgomery County's executive office and our, and it's Montgomery County's economic development program, because whereas a lot of it gets focused, the county has focused on White Flint, White Oak, the Shady Grove, Medical Campus, I think that's what they call it, and I'm not sure, these big sort of large area redevelopment, it, we really have not historically received, beyond the sector planning, which was very intense for a period of years through, up to 2012, we have not really received any attention or interest at all from, from, from Montgomery County, because it's, as I said, their, their focus is much more in the, in the big glorious campus kind of developments in, in the suburbs rather than what's the potential in the inner suburbs like we have here, but the potential is really huge. And so, I think we, we need to somehow or another figure out how we grab the attention of, of the county, the county council members and help them to understand that it's worth everybody's while. I mean, really, I mean, it's just, it's, so I won't perseverate on that, but let me just say a couple other things. I think one of the things from a conceptual point of view that's important to understand in the big picture, and I, I'm hoping that the Cloudburst group will help, help delineate this and with numbers and facts, is that I see that arts crossroads in New Hampshire corridor area, kind of like in the middle of a pincer, pincher movement, because of redevelopment going around the area in all directions, and it's kind of closing in. I mean, to the south in, in Washington DC, you've, we've had a huge residential development of high-end townhouses and duplexes and single-family houses that right up, butt up against this, the city line. Very large subdivision that's been completed for, you know, expensive properties. In Hyattsville, in Baltimore, Baltimore Boulevard, the so-called Arts District, that was an area, as you, you may remember from your council government days, was, looks like a no-man-land eight years ago, and it has undergone massive development. Silver Spring is just, you know, cranes, construction cranes are all over the place, and it's, you know, putting pressure on, on property values in that area. And eventually, developers are going to come to the conclusion that even though they're operating at 100% occupancy in the crossroads at market rents, that there's no subsidy, you know, reduced rents in this area, even though you might think so by looking at it, that it's going to occur to them that, golly, we really can make a whole lot more money by tearing down these seven, like one of our shopping centers is 70 years old, the one JBGR bought, and tearing it down and, and building what's called for in, in the sector plan. And I'm hoping that the Cloudburst strategic study will help elucidate that, and then we can use that as a marketing tool to get, get developers to start, you know, scratching their chins and saying, well, gee, maybe we, it's time to, to move ahead. I just mentioned that as, as a thought. And the only other couple things that I hope we can move towards going forward are, is the subject of possi, the possibility of a tax increment financing the district in the crossroads, New Hampshire Avenue corridor area, because I think there's enough economic development potential there to justify it. And also, something that I've been working on for many years without much success, is the convening of a bi-county coordinating commission. That would be an informal organization of stakeholders on both sides of the PG Montgomery County line in the crossroads area to give voice to the property owners, to the businesses of which there are hundreds, and to the consumers who, you know, who shop that area, and all the other people that are interested in what happens there, which there are a lot. And I can talk about that. It's, it's something that's hard to do, and I can talk to you about why it's been difficult to, to get this, to move forward, but I've been trying to do it for three or four years. And that's something else that I think I, you know, looms in our, it's a potential thing that looms in our future. So, I just want to say that I don't really have any questions for you tonight. I'm just pleased that you're here and so glad that you have gotten to the, to the level of knowledge that you have so fast. That's extremely heartening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Koa.
Thank you. And I also want to say, thank you, Mr. Sonenclark, and the challenges, you're going to have to do this good or better every time, so we'll be watching. I know there's sort of these overlapping documents and parts of the area aren't within the city or within another county, et cetera, which makes it harder, but I do think, and Councilmember Mayall mentioned some of these things, we really have to be sure that within all of this, the focus isn't exclusively, I don't have a problem with the things that Councilmember Schultz was talking about, but it shouldn't be, and I don't think he was saying this, that it can be exclusively just about economic development. We have to have amenities that we need, which certainly includes, for me, affordable housing, but the recreation piece that he mentioned also, you know, there's a meeting tomorrow from a small group that's been started up here in the city and the friends of the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, which is, I think most people agree, is small and really great for what it is, but needs to be expanded. So, I think there has to be expanded opportunities along there and social and community meeting kinds of places too, which we seem to have more of over in this part of the city than elsewhere. So, I think all those things have to really be part of it. And then the other thing is, it sounds like we could have potentially several thousand additional people moving in over time, depending on what happens with this. So, that then gets to, you know, more need for police and, and for garbage collection and all the other kinds of things that we do here. Now, the hope is that that will be balanced out by additional tax receipts as a result, but I wonder, and this is what I wanted to ask the city manager and not to answer now, but is there a way to sort of say, well, for every, you know, this many people who moved into the city, assuming, you know, a range of incomes, it would cost this much for us to provide the services that we need to do? Because I'm just wondering, you know, what that's all going to mean. It sounds like over time, we would need to probably hire more people to do some of the things.
Oh, darn. No, I, I think there's, there's two different things to look at. We actually, when we did the annexation of the area that was in Prince George's County before unification took place, part of the information that has to be provided on that is exactly what's, what's the cost of services for residents coming into a city. And so, I actually got a good amount of experience looking at that, and the cost to the city isn't that high. There's, there would be, part of the reason is that, you know, how many city clerks do you need, you know, or that kind of, some things, you know...
It would take...
Exactly, as many as possible.
It would take five to replace what we have, I just want to say.
But for certain, for certain kinds of activities, you know, you don't, one person can accommodate, you know, that change of number. For other things, and particularly county services, residents, new residents cost money, especially related to schools, and some related to kind of health and social services. And so, from a municipal standpoint, it doesn't hurt us as much. The, the money comes from the property taxes, and, and more often they come from the commercial side of the property taxes rather than the residential. So, that it is part of the discussion, it's part of why we talk mixed-use. When we look at mixed-use, it is an opportunity to provide affordable housing as part of that component. It's something that otherwise we would have to be putting out quite a bit more money on. And so, I think as we, as we look at this, part of the reason that all the work was done on these sector plans and what we called for, the size of things, not only was to kind of present the image that we wanted and, and protect the single-family home residents kind of behind the commercial areas, but was to get enough money out of that to, to meet the housing needs that we have.
That's helpful, and I guess I would just say, I understand that we don't just have total or even that much control over the precise kinds of businesses that do come in there, but I think to the extent we have the ability to push for and insist that there be grocery stores so that we don't end up with a lot of apartments and, you know, a food desert kind of situation, and expanded recreation opportunities and things of that nature, I think we should make that a high priority. So, thank you.
Good, thanks.
And thanks again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two final points. One, have you thought about ways to help small businesses stay open for business once construction starts for the purple line? I know...
Yeah, we got that one figured out there.
I've thought about it. Good. I believe it will also be part of the strategic plan or the Business Retention and Expansion Program that is currently underway, but I would...
NTA is also working on that, so that's part of their plan for mitigation during construction for businesses.
And I just want to let you know that Prince George's County is trying to do something also.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing is affordable housing on the Prince George's County side, because they've had a spotty record when it comes to affordable housing. Have you thought about talking to them and see what their vision is for that area? Because I don't necessarily believe they want to see the same type of affordable housing that we may want on the Tacoma Park, Montgomery County housing side. That's it. Thank you.
I don't know if either one of you want to speak for that?
You can look into it. You can, you can, next week. You've been with us for 15 days. You can come back and answer all those questions.
And I do think that it is part of the discussions that we've even had with Prince George's County, because we, we want this area to feel like a coherent area, not, not a divided area.
Great. Terrific. Well, thank you so much for the presentation and welcome aboard, and we look forward to working with you more.
Appreciate it. I'm happy to be here.
Have a good evening.
Looking forward to working with you all.
Great. All right. Don't forget the Tacoma Junction meetings tomorrow night and on Sunday. Go online, do the surveys, tell your friends to do them, and I think that's it, right? All right, we're adjourned. Go online, do the surveys, tell your friends to do them, and I think that's it, right? All right, we're adjourned.